Do you want to punt to the only person sitting here live in the room?
I'll defer to Commissioner Gamaros.
I hear that's payback, so thank you, sir.
Okay, so today, the following will be considered at the work session meeting of the Doñana County Board of County Commissioners, held today, Tuesday, October the 7th, 2025. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So then we're going to call for quorum, right, to see who's here? No? A roll call, yeah. So we'll have a roll call? So do I go ahead and do the roll call, or you want to do it?
Well, I don't see anybody from the Clerk's office here, so Commissioner Sanchez?
Present.
And Commissioner Gamaros.
Present. And that's it? Okay, so item number one, review resolution number 2024-82, resolution to adopt public safety background standards.
All right, I will be presenting, Stephen Lopez, Assistant County Manager. I'll just wait for it to load up on the main screen so that Commissioner Sanchez can see it. All right. So just as a quick reminder of how we got here, there had been complaints when I stepped into the interim county manager role last March, March of 2024, from the sheriff, the fire chief, and the detention center director regarding the application of hiring standards. In particular, there were two areas that they had noted what they described as challenges on. That was the psychological testing being used and IDETCT. As a result of discussions with HR, the assistant county managers, and with those people, we made the decision to come forward with a resolution that would provide an opportunity for those three individuals in particular to appeal any determinations. So that was basically confirming that there are hiring standards for public safety positions. That's very important because by statute for us to be merit-based, we have to have standards that we are adhering to for hiring. And as you might recall from discussions earlier this year, being merit-based is a very key part of the county maintaining consistency in the hiring practices rather than each individual elected official having their own hiring standards. So we created that resolution. The board did pass it, which set up those hiring standards and also an appeal process for agency leaders. Since then, we have had no appeals come forward from the fire department nor from the detention center. There have been two batches of appeals from Sheriff Stewart. And on the screen are the actual words that were utilized in the appeals. Now, I need to point out here, the appeal form states specifically that they should be describing how any deficiency identified in the hiring process would be corrected. There was never any deficiency recommendation, how it could be addressed in any of these processes. Instead, in the first process, which was an appeal of seven individuals, it said, quote, "I am appealing the decision in this matter because there is no level of expertise in DACHR to accurately assess or even understand pre-employment psychological tests. Further, these tests are pass/fail, and the outcome is based on a total score." And then on the final one, it said, "The mere use of the word accommodation on the form does not mean an accommodation is necessary for work to be completed. The test itself is to accommodate a person with difficulties perceiving color. The policy cited does not apply." Again, no indication of how any type of deficiency, in that case was colorblindness and the others were primarily psychological tests, would be evaluated. Just to give kind of an example of how a deficiency that might be identified in, for example, a psychological test could be addressed would be, and we've seen this before, and I've certainly seen it in my career, somebody is former military, they experienced PTSD coming out of the military, and that gets flagged on the psychological. Overall, they're given a recommendation for hiring, but the psychologist expresses concern that they might be subject to outbursts of anger or they might be subject to increased stress. And so a way to correct that deficiency might be that they meet regularly with the law enforcement psychologist. Maybe that's once every six months, once every year, in order to make sure they're doing well, make sure the psychologist has been able to give them coping skills and mechanisms, and make sure those are still working to do anger management or whatever else it might be. So that's how you would identify that deficiency and how you might go about correcting that type of a deficiency. But as you can see, there's no indication in either of those two batches of appeals of how deficiencies would be addressed. Instead, it was just a challenge of authority of, and particularly HR, to do anything. And having sat on both of these, and I'll ask ACM Weir if she wants to chime in at any point here, I think actually HR bent over backward, especially in the last one, and probably did more than they even should have. They could have and should have just flagged that one, we'll talk more about that here in a minute, and sent it back because there was a deficiency by the medical provider that did the actual evaluation of that applicant. So moving forward, batch number one, the outcome of that one was five of the seven cadets were cleared for hiring after the appeal committee heard from a subject matter expert, an external psychologist that had not been involved in the initial review. That external psychologist helped us identify what is it that these things mean and how could these things be addressed? So the committee ended up doing what the sheriff should have done on the form in identifying what are the deficiencies and can they be managed. On batch number two, HR was unable to locate an external subject matter expert on colorblindness, but it ends up that probably wasn't necessary anyway because, first, the standard on colorblindness is set by the state law enforcement academy, not by the county. And the flagging was done on an LEA form, not a county form. It was an error by the physician to indicate that the candidate needed an accommodation, but then not describe what that accommodation should be. It actually says on the form, that is what the physician should have done. So the committee recommended that the candidate remain in process while the physician was contacted to remedy the incomplete or incorrect form. Having now been through two of these processes, it's clear to me and we probably don't need this formal of a process. The hiring standards can and probably should be incorporated into the new HR policy manual. And we should probably remove the appeal panel as it's currently constituted and move the appeal process to being within HR. And then, again, keep an appeal process, keep it in writing, but stipulate that the appeal has to have that factual basis. It has to be addressing whether or not there is a deficiency and how that deficiency will be addressed. Otherwise, HR should have the opportunity to just go ahead and deny it outright without having to go through the process. We've now been joined by Commissioner Reynolds, so come on up. So with that, happy to answer any questions, or I'll turn it over to ACM Weir if she has anything else to say. She's saying absolutely not, she's not getting in front of the microphone today. So any questions on this, any direction? Do you want us to just go ahead and incorporate this into the policy manual going forward? Any concerns?
Commissioner Sanchez, do you have any questions or concerns?
Thank you. I just want to understand, and I don't have any concerns with integrating into the policy manual and that way it can be adjusted where, you know, when we get feedback and can make further improvements. I think my only question is, when are we going to be seeing some of the manuals and procedures when it comes to this in terms of a timeline? Because I know it's been in process, but I don't think I've seen when we expect to get that in front of us.
Commissioner Sanchez, this is Stephen Lopez again. I have confirmation from ACM Weir and Meg Haines that we should be getting that final draft to the board to look at within the next month. So by the end of October.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds, I know you came in afterwards, do you have any questions or concerns?
Correct.
I'll give you a moment to look at that. And so my question is, when the sheriff came up to us at the meeting and was talking about this resolution, the reason I wanted to be brought up is I wanted her feedback on that because she did have concerns and complaints about the resolution. I wanted, and I was hoping to get, what is it that actually, what type of language or wording was that she was concerned with? I know that, I think the last time we spoke, she just said to either repeal it, just get rid of it all. But, and then she said also that, I guess, the meetings that you had with with the administration of the sheriff or chief cherry?
Correct.
That they weren't even present for that meeting, so, you know, I wasn't here, so I don't know about that. But I was hoping that she would be here to have let us know what is her concerns were, because I don't know what they are. So by any chance, do you guys know what they are?
So staff did reach out, sorry, thank you Commissioner Gamaros. Staff did reach out to the sheriff, and in an email, she indicated she did not want to participate in today's meeting. It was not an issue of scheduling or anything else, she said she did not want to participate. The concerns, as I noted earlier, were really over that psychological and IDETCT originally. Her concerns now are she doesn't like the process. She doesn't believe HR should have any say over the hiring. And again, if we're going to be a merit-based county, that's simply not possible. As far as her and Chief Cherry being present, they were not present when the resolution was voted on, but they had been provided, and we've got email documentation of that, copies of it well in advance. Drafts were actually run through then, and up to two weeks before, they were in agreement. Now, I will point out that per state statute, the sheriff is required by statute to be at every BOCC meeting. So her choosing to be absent could actually be perceived as a violation of state statute.
You know, Mr. Commissioner Reynolds, I actually, looking over these items, I know that they've been some items of contention for some time. And I believe that we should be able to find some middle ground where both parties are participate in the decision as to whether or not the cadets are actually qualified or not. I think the bigger challenge, though, that we have is not so much as who is going to make that decision as to the timeliness of it. Because it's my understanding that we can't have a psychological study done and then wait for two or three or four months before we decide whether or not a candidate can actually participate in the program. And I think that's a bigger challenge. So either we slow down, or either we speed up the process of doing these psychological evaluations and getting consent from both HR and the sheriff's department, or we push back the process of actually training the cadets. So I think that's our bigger challenge, is that we have two different parties trying to make a decision on whether they're qualified, and neither one of them can do it in real time, I think that's the question.
Commissioner Reynolds, you're absolutely correct, timing is critical. And this is where the current process actually is a big impediment. So the psychological tests do not come straight to HR, is that correct, Meg? They go through DASO. Right, so for the sheriff's department, those go to the sheriff's department, so HR does not have control over when they receive those. Now, can we put in policy, the new policy manual, a stipulation that within, say, 10 days of receipt of those, HR will conduct a review? That's certainly possible.
Well, I think the policy should actually state that when we get a copy of the psychological evaluations, yes, that within, within seven days after receiving them at the sheriff's department, that the HR department should get them, and both should be, should arrive and be reviewed with, two weeks before the training starts.
And, absolutely. The, the timing of the academies, and I can say this on the fire side, is often set months in advance. And sometimes people aren't sent for testing or testing's not conducted when it should be far enough in advance. So that is something else we can certainly put into a timeline that they should, the testing should be at least initiated, say, 60 days in advance.
Well, and that's, and that's a, the onus is actually on the departments, both HR and the sheriff's department, to make sure that we get those tests done and psychological evaluation done way before the academy starts.
Right.
If that doesn't happen, then that's actually a failure on the department's point, and they should be, the person should have to wait till the next academy. And I think the process has to be clean enough that everybody understands what the requirements are and the deadlines in advance. And now, if the sheriff has a problem with it, that's fine. And HR has a problem with it, that's fine. They have to work this out way before the academy starts, that's all. They can't wait till three, two or three months in the academy to actually find out that there's a problem with the psychological balance.
Good morning, Meg Haines, HR Director. I agree with you, Commissioner Reynolds. There is a full process that goes along with the pre-employment of any cadets in the county. And in the long run, it's looking at everything as a whole on whether that candidate should be moving forward in the employment process. So there's at different steps, different tasks are done, and we do not conduct pre-employment medical or psychological testing until a contingent offer is given to that candidate based on law. And so, yes, there are areas that are on the department, there's areas that are on HR. We have hiring process in order to ensure that that moves forward. But unfortunately, if HR does not get those psychological exams in a timely manner or complete, then we have to communicate back with the department that there's something missing, or if it's so far missing or if it's so far down the line in the process, because in the long run with the sheriff's office cadets, they have to be approved by LEA before they can enter into the academy also. So everything's timing, everything's timing. And it's just important to make sure that everybody in that whole process, whether it be the department or HR, is meeting those timelines.
Thank you, Meg. Something else that I'd like to mention, when I was actually hiring people myself for my department, and I had four managers reviewing them in HR, one of the things that we did, and I said is, I want each one of you to talk to the candidate each way to do the evaluation. If any one of you says no, then the candidate is out and we get another candidate. And I know that if, based on what I hear here, it sounds like that, that should be probably part of the process here as well. Because I don't think that if HR is not comfortable with a candidate and/or the Sheriff's Department is not comfortable with a candidate, that we should just not move forward with the candidate and find another candidate. And certainly, that's going to extend the process and cause some problem, but it's better to be wrong in the wrong direction than it is to be wrong and be wrong and not know it. You know what I'm saying? And take the chance. I mean, I would rather have somebody not be here than to hire the wrong person. I think it's that, because it puts the county at risk, puts people at risk, and it's just better to just move on to somebody else. Now, can we put that in policy? I don't know. But that's certainly something I think that I usually would stand by in my organization anyway.
Commissioner Reynolds, I agree. That's what I've always practiced as well. And I think for the most part, that's exactly where things have been. DASO gets the first shot at saying no, and then HR was that final check. And I think that's where the conflict was, is that the sheriff in particular did not want HR to have a say in that process. But I agree with you. There's a very valid reason for HR doing that, and that is to prevent a negligent hire, exactly like you were describing. So I think that is very important. And I do want to point out one thing, the, on one of the slides where the sheriff had indicated that the, that HR shouldn't be making that decision based on the psychological report, that it's a pass fail. The State Law Enforcement Academy actually disagrees with the sheriff's statement, and in fact, the NMLA had to disqualify cadets that DASO tried to bring on board. Because they agreed with HR. It is not just a pass fail. If it was just a pass fail, there would be no written report, it would just be a form where they check a box. The fact that they have to provide that form, it needs to be read to ensure that you're looking at the entire candidate. So I think you're absolutely right. The, the department should have a say, and first say, in my opinion, and then HR should have the final say to ensure policy's being followed.
And, and thank you, Stephen. You know, I believe that that should be the policy throughout the whole county as well. I think the department heads, directors should have first right of veto. And if in fact, some glaring, if our information comes up in a background check or some sort of history check, then HR has a veto possibility as well. However, we all know that state statute and state policy says that the ultimate arbiter in this situation is county manager. And I don't think that's going to change. However, we might also consider putting in there that if in fact, Sheriff's Department doesn't agree with the HR department and the county manager gets involved, that there may be at least one situation or some situations that might come before our board to also make a decision as well as the final arbiter. Because ultimately, I think we're responsible for the safety, welfare, and the community more than anybody else. So we, I'd like for us to consider that at least.
I think you're absolutely spot on regarding the county manager's decision, because that is exactly what your charge to the county manager is. I think it would actually violate statute and board code if the board made a hiring decision of anybody besides the county manager.
Okay. I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds.
Well, and I think it's, I think it's important that we get a consistent process is the main thing. Everybody understands what that is and gets on board with it. And the other thing is, we can't afford to have so much lack of communication between departments and elected officials and directors and HR. That has, that has, that bridge has to be built and has to be maintained. And I think again, that goes back to county managers responsible for arbitrating all that if everything fails.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. I agree with you as well. Commissioner Sanchez, do you have anything else to say?
Not at this time.
Okay, does anyone else? No? All right. Let's move on to number two. So Government Center Security Improvements.
So to begin this, I would like to invite Judge Judith Baca up to talk about her concerns and her experiences, because that will kind of set the understanding for why it is that we've brought this to the commissioners.
Good morning. Good morning to the board. Good morning to County Manager Scott and Drew and Carrie and the Assistant County Managers and of course, the commissioners. The reason why I wanted to address this, this topic was because I'm concerned about the safety of all of the, all of the tenants, so to speak, that, that work inside this building as well as even other customers that are coming to receive services within the county building. I have had some experience in our office, in the clerk's office, where we've had some irate people who have raised their voices, who have, you know, some that are, they aren't even sure why people within the county's office and in the clerk's office have their cubicles decorated the way they've decorated them, and it's just because they're decorated to, to celebrate specific type of, of occasions and therefore, you know, they've addressed that with some of the clerks and have raised their voices, and it's concerning. And my clerks have had to deal with people from off the street that are incoherent, aren't making sense. And, you know, we're not sure what they're there for, they're, they're rattling off things that don't make any sense, they're not really there for the probate, and we've had to call security to come and escort them out. After hearing, you know, some of the concerns that, that occurred during the meeting having to do with the Jupiter project, that is also what raised my attention is that you're, I didn't realize that there was, wasn't more security within the building. And the way things are getting heated within, just, you know, even nationally, I'm concerned about that. And I've wondered why we can't have more security at the front entrance and also to not allow weapons to come within the building, because somebody could just go unhinged and, you know, just target anyone that's in here. And, you know, someone could become the subject of, of something tragic. So I would like to raise that issue and to ask if we could somehow get some kind of security for people when they enter into the building, to clear them of weapons. And as an officer of the court, I think that is something I can request. So I just wanted to have that addressed and see what we can do to maybe get that completed with this building.
So Commissioners, Carrie Neal, County Attorney. We, my team has looked at this from all sorts of different angles and, and trying to figure out what we can do to, to assist the judge and her request that we provide additional security primarily by, by, what's the word? Refusing to allow deadly weapons, firearms, that sort of thing into the county building. The county itself and the Board of County Commissioners has been determined not to possess the ability to do that, to make that decision on their own. As a matter of fact, there was a constitutional amendment in 1986 that says no municipality or county shall regulate in any way an incident of the right to keep and bear arms. And unfortunately, that has been interpreted to mean that the county under the Constitution can't say you can't bring firearms into the building and regulate it in that way. Now, there are questions about whether or not the county as a landowner, as, as a, you know, enforcer of the rules on their property can make those decisions. But that has not been challenged yet in court. What has been made very, very clear by both our courts and the Attorney General's Office is that officers of the court have the ability to regulate within their spaces and the hallways adjacent to their spaces, whether or not firearms and deadly weapons can be allowed into those areas. And so that's where Judge Baca is, is able to say, she does have the authority to say, I do not want deadly weapons in the, in my chambers, in the areas where my, my clerks and my staff are going to be located or in the hallways adjacent to that. And so because of her location on the first floor, then she is able to say, there should not be weapons, deadly weapons coming in at the entrance doors and in the hallways connecting to my chambers and, and the area right outside of my chambers. And so that's what her request was to the county manager. And county manager and ACMs and I have all agreed that we will do our part to help her make sure that her area is secure, that her staff is secure, that she is secure. And so we are bringing that to you, because this is, this is the county building and the county commissioners get to say ultimately what happens in that building. So with the request and authority presented by our probate court judge, we are looking to you for some guidance on how you would like us to respond to and address the issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds, do you have anything to add to that or questions, comments?
Well, we have additional limitations here in the county building as well. Like, for instance, the security team that we have here don't have a tremendous amount of authority in order to act when somebody comes in the building. The only, the only organization that can actually take action in this building and in the county is actually the Sheriff's Department. So in order for us to take any additional action here for protecting the judge and her facilities would be one of two things. Either have someone posted from the Sheriff's Department out in the hallway to check people for weapons, or put up metal detectors at the entrance into the, into the clerk's office. And I think the, probably the most reasonable way to do that would be to provide metal detectors going into clerk's office, but that doesn't stop or even prevent someone from doing it in the hallway. So we've kind of got to catch 22 here. If we can't stop them at the front door coming in, and we can't, and stopping them at the clerk's office is not enough in the line, in the hallway, then we've really got a conundrum that we have to try to figure out about how we're going to do this and do it reasonably. There's, there is one other option, and that is we could actually close that hallway and put a metal detector at that hallway as people come in and have them, everybody going into that hallway go through the metal detector. That would be probably the, the most reasonable way to do it, but it would also be kind of cumbersome to have everybody go through a metal detector every time you go in and out of that hallway. But I don't see a really good option here.
Commissioners, if I may?
No.
The, the way that, oh, I apologize, Commissioner Sanchez.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Miss Neal. No, good. I'll respond after.
The way that the decisions have been written, they consider all hallways that lead to her office, to the judge's chambers, as being part of the area that she is able to say that, that there are no deadly weapons allowed. And, and so that actually does lead right up to the front door, because in order to access her hallway, you have to pass through that area right there by security and, and through that front door. So we can't, we would not be able to put a metal detector outside of the, the front doors or in between those doors, but as they, as people walk into that second door, we could put metal detectors into, in that area, much like we did for the, the Project Jupiter meeting. And actually, that was done at the request of the judge, because she was concerned for her safety and the safety of the clerk's office and her employees down there. And so we, we can, under her authority and at her request, put metal detectors right there like we did for that meeting.
Commissioner Sanchez, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I guess a couple of things to what Commissioner Reynolds said, and I just questioned, you know, I think the concern about the only people that have authority here at the government or in the, in the government center is the, is DASO. And the only reason I question that is because we've, we've been told by the sheriff on many occasions that the county building falls within LCPD jurisdiction and not DASO's. And so I know there's been several occasions that she's reminded me of that, and so just want to, you know, maybe we get clarity on that piece. But, but the other part is, is that if we're just looking for, you know, trying for, to identify anybody coming in that could potentially be a threat, I don't think we need law enforcement necessarily. I mean, that would be something I figured we could, you would be able to work out with the existing security company and our contractor. But the other, another suggestion would be rather than metal detectors, is if, I don't know if anybody has seen what LCPS has been using, and it's, it's a technology that, or that they use by Evolve. And I think it was Evolve is there, is the, the company's name. And it's used at many sporting events where it's not a metal detector, but it's using electromagnetic waves to identify what's on a person and in their bags. So then they don't have to necessarily go through an X-ray, similar to what you see at a courthouse. But it's, it's using AI and the software built, the software and the AI built into it to potentially identify threats, and they can pull a person to the side and say, hey, can we take a look in your purse or your backpack or, you know, do you have something on you? It gives a good indication to at least of, of something that, that could be concerning that they can stop. But the nice thing is, is that the person just walks through it, rather than having to, you know, be fully going through a metal detector and moving things off of them, going through an X-ray and doing that. And it may be a good alternative so that in terms of safety, we have some ability to see and, and, and check people that are coming into the facility, but also it's not as invasive as what you see at, say, a courthouse and such. So then we can potentially give, that, that still have like a pretty open atmosphere, but we do have security checks in place.
Thanks, sir. This is Scott, by the way. So I love that idea and obviously love the utilization of technology. It's my understanding that we have access to these metal detectors now and an abundance of caution. I would like to at least get the take of the three of you here. I would like to utilize them particularly for these next few meetings and maybe revisit after that from a policy perspective. It's not uncommon, and in two of my organizations in the Atlanta area, we did have metal detectors at every single board meeting. And I know what message that sends, but also safety first. So from the three of you on the call, do you want to give us some additional guidance hearing some of what we heard from Judge Baca, as well as some of the things we're looking at? And that was a good point you brought up, Commissioner Sanchez, regarding who could help here, was, let's, Las Cruces or the DASO office? help here, was it Las Cruces or the DASO office? And the issue last time was, one group can't lay hands on them, and the other one is only here for like riot protection. So we basically had to just clear the room and let them filter out, but I want a better plan moving forward, and that's kind of why we're here on this topic today.
Thank you. Well, Judge Baca, thank you for voicing this because for us as elected officials with this, what's going on right now nationally, I think we need to take abundance of precaution because you just don't know what's going to happen. And I really do think that we do need to protect ourselves and especially, you know, look at what happened in that meeting on Project Jupiter, you know? I wasn't here, but I was on the phone and I could see what was happening and I could hear, and that was scary. So for all of you that were here, you know, that was a scary situation, and you don't know in that audience who has what and what they're going to do. So I feel like we need to take precaution right now, and if we can, according to what Mrs. Neal had said about, you know, having these metal detectors and we can go ahead and do it on the, asking the authority of the judge, I think we need to move forward and do whatever we can and then come up with some kind of policy or procedure in place. But for now, I think we need to do something.
Thank you, Commissioner Camaros. This is Commissioner Reynolds. Something else that has not been discussed that I think we should consider in terms of safety is that we harden the dais up here by putting some sort of bulletproof protection on the inside of that. So if somebody did come in and start shooting, at least we'd be able to get low and be protected for a small period of time until we can maybe get the situation abated. So something else to consider. And it doesn't sound like it's, and, you know, buying steel, that'll stop most bullets, is not that expensive and not that hard to install, just as another layer on the dais.
Good morning, Deb. We're Assistant County Manager. Commissioner Reynolds, that is actually in process already with facilities, and they're in the process of getting the quotes to make that happen for you.
All right.
Commissioner Sanchez, anything else in your answer?
No, sir. I think I'm relatively in agreement with the direction.
All right. So anybody else have any comments, any? Yeah, staff input, any? Oh, staff input's next. Okay.
So I'll start off staff input. This is Stephen Lopez, Assistant County Manager, and just wanted to make sure that the board is aware of a couple of things. First is, our internal auditor is off for a couple of weeks for a very happy occasion. I'm not going to share his news, I'll let him do that, but clearly some of you are already aware of it. Related to that, Scott has asked me to serve as the point of contact for the external audit that is being done in conjunction with the Office of the State Auditor. And I had a good meeting with them last Friday. I know that there had been a number of concerns expressed regarding the scope of the audit. So we actually went down line by line through the RFP. The Office of the State Auditor's representative was also in the meeting and do want to make sure the board is aware that the State Auditor's Office has, on their authority, given the auditing firm, the authority to do a full special audit. That means they can look at all aspects of the county. And that is actually, they showed me where that is written into the contract that the county issued to the auditors that are working with this, JAG. And so they are going through, trying to meet with as many county employees as they can, trying to get what they said is a sense of the organizational culture and to see how that culture plays into the dynamics and how policies are followed or when exceptions may or may not be made. And they're also looking at something that is going to require board action in one form or another, and that is our relationship with external entities. They had flagged six already, and then we've identified a couple more that they were not aware of. And what we're going to need to do, it may have been done in years past, but if so, it was decades ago, and we aren't able to come up with the records for it. And that is, are these external agencies component units of the county or not? And the State Auditor's Office made it very clear, the determination of a component unit in this case is not a legal decision, it is not a are they under us or not decision, it is an evaluation of the financial relationship between the county and these agencies. So I'll give an example of MERVDA. So Mesia Valley Regional Dispatch Authority is a standalone entity. They do their own hiring, they have their own budget, but the county does have a financial commitment to them through the joint powers agreement, and that is not an annual commitment. While the annual commitment can be changed by the board, the only way to get out of having a financial commitment to MERVDA would be for us to completely pull out of the JPA. So therefore, they need to be evaluated to determine if, from a financial standpoint, they are a component unit that we need to reflect in our annual audit. And that is probably one of the changes we will need to be making annually. Each time we have our annual audit, we need to have a review of the component units, and the board, therefore, when they approve the audit findings or the audit report, needs to confirm that yes, these are or are not component units of the county. And you can imagine from the boards that you all sit on, that there are a number of potential component units. You know, CRUA has been brought up, Animal Services Center has been brought up. So just wanted to make sure, even Memorial Medical Center has been brought up because that is a lease, and therefore, if the lease was terminated, that could put the county and the city into a financial need, for example, to bring in a new provider or something else. So that's going to be something new for you to see moving forward. Please let me know if you have any concerns regarding the audit, if you have any suggestions regarding the audit, and I will work with JAG and the State Auditor's Office to make sure those are addressed. So commissioners, any questions?
No questions, so.
Stephen, can you elaborate on the other aspect we learned that it's, this isn't a punitive process, it's more to formulate recommendations moving forward? Is that covering the gist of it, or?
Thank you, County Manager Andrews. That's a great point that I neglected to cover. The State Auditor's Office made it very clear, the intent of this audit is not to find things wrong, but rather to provide the board a roadmap of, these are issues, and here are some possible ways to address these issues so that the county can be the strongest it can be moving forward. There is no intent for this to be punitive from the State Auditor's Office, and it seemed quite clear that the auditors understood that as well.
All right. Any comments or questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Sanchez?
No, thank you.
No, I don't have any comment.
So I have one other item for staff input commissioners. We have the external firm coming in, that's the International Association of Fire Chiefs, to review the fire department's operations and make recommendations for us, and they'll be going to be here next week. And they've asked if there are commissioners who might want to participate. Obviously, it could be up to two. And so my thoughts, and I've shared these with County Manager Andrews, he's in agreement, are that perhaps the two best people to represent us, if you are willing, is Commissioner Reynolds and Commissioner Sanchez, to meet next week with the external firm coming in on the, to make recommendations on fire, on fire rescues, future, structure, et cetera.
I'm fine with that. Mr. Sanchez?
Depending on the timing of it, I'm open to it.
Very good. They will be here for three full days doing interviews and having sessions, but you can participate in what you want to or can participate. You are not at all expected to be there for the full three days. So I will pass your names on then to Interim Chief Bowen and let him pass those on to the IAFC team that's coming on site.
I'll see what my schedule is, I'm not sure until I know the days.
All right. So that is all I have for staff input.
Anybody else? Any other staff members? No? We're done? All right. Okay. Okay. So with that said, the commission will be going into closed session. The board may convene in closed session regarding the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property and water rights to discuss information that is covered by attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation as authorized by the Open Meetings Act, Section 10-15-1, H2, 7, and 8, NMSA 1978. So we go into closed session. Thank you. Thank you for that.
So to clarify, is the motion by Reynolds, second by Sanchez?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, gotcha.
All right. So, oh, Brandy, hi. So roll call, please? Commissioner Garmelos?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll go into closed session. Thank you. Now we'll go into closed session.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble with my microphone.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Let the record reflect that nothing was discussed in closed session other than the items identified in the motion to go into closed session.